Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. We will call to order the November 2nd, 2023 Planning Commission. If you guys will all rise, we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, we will start off tonight with approval of the agenda. And I think then we're starting with 3A, the election of the vice chair.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
All right, motion on the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Passes four zero. All right, so then we will move on to, yeah, 3A, the election of the vice chair.
I'll make a motion to nominate Ryan Maltzen to be the vice chair.
Second that.
All right, motion's been made. Darren and Paul, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And motion passes four zero. So let's move on to the good part of the evening. We're going to go to the swearing in of our new commissioner, Nick Preisler.
Nick, stand up and raise your hand. Be there for me. I, Nick Preisler.
I, Nick Preisler.
Do solemnly swear to affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
In that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of the city of Dayton.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office for the city of Dayton.
As a planning commissioner in the counties of Hennepin and Wright.
As a planning commissioner in the counties of Hennepin and Wright.
The state of Minnesota.
The state of Minnesota.
According to law and the best of my judgment and ability.
According to, well, they say, the state of Minnesota, according to law and the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Helps to have this approved.
It does, yes. Yeah, it was nice to read it.
Welcome aboard, Darren.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we will go to item number four, the consent agenda. And we will do an approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Do we have any discussion on the minutes?
Don't have any. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, motion from Paul, second from Darren, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Moving on to item five, open forum. Open forum is for all those in the gallery. Public comments are limited to three minutes. This is for items not currently on tonight's agenda. If you've got anything, please state your name and address. No commission action will be taken at this time. Items will be referred along to staff. So is there anyone here tonight for open forum, or anybody online?
No, we were not able to get Zoom working, so we have nobody on line today.
All right, and no one here, so we will go ahead and close open forum. Moving on to item six, council updates.
We're missing a council member.
We are missing a council member.
Do we expect him to show, or is it?
I've not heard.
Okay, so maybe we just table it for later?
Sure, we will, we will put that one on hold until a bit later. So moving along then to item number seven, public hearing. We'll put item A in regards to the OPUS rezoning.
You're already 11 minutes ahead.
Doing a bang-up job.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the commission. Tonight you have the OPUS Administrative Subdivision Rezoning and Site Plan application. So the applicant in this project is the OPUS Development Company LLC. The location is on the corner of Holly and Territorial, sorry, Dayton Parkway and Territorial, at 17600 Territorial Road. It is approximately a 10-acre site. It is guided industrial and public institutional with the current zoning of B4 commercial industrial, and it is in the current MUSA staging area for utilities. So the first of the applications is the administrative subdivision. So this is a request to subdivide the existing parcel to create two parcels. One, which I'll call parcel A, is for the larger parcel for OPUS, which is 9.76 acres. Parcel B is a half acre for the existing telecommunications tower that exists on the site today. Because this site was previously platted as part of the Dayton Industrial Park subdivision, they do qualify for administrative subdivision action, as the alternative would be a full preliminary and final plat. The proposed lots do comply with the required lot size with in-depth standards for their respective rezoning district standards. So there is a rezoning request, and these lots will comply with that rezone, with the district, that they would be rezoned to, in terms of those development standards. The rezoning, it's currently zoned B4 commercial industrial. The request is to rezone parcel A, which is the OPUS parcel, to I-1 light industrial district, and parcel B to the essential services district. So it would be changing different parts of the lot. Both parcels will comply with those respective district standards for lot area within setbacks. There are no performance standards for the essential services district, as that is a district for things like pump houses, warehouses, telecommunications towers, things like that. The existing structures and antenna on parcel B do comply with the performance standards for telecommunications towers and facilities. So we did check against those from section 21 of the zoning ordinance. So staff does support the rezoning based on that it's consistent with the 2040 comprehensive plan. And the background on that is that there was a comprehensive plan amendment that was approved back in March, and it was adopted in late July, once they got approved through the Matt Council, to change the future land use designation from commercial to industrial for the OPUS parcel. The public institutional for the telecommunications tower didn't change. That still stayed the same with that request. So with that, they brought forward a site plan as well, located in front of you here. There are three accesses shown on the plan, I'll get into that more, with one main building, and then parking surrounding the site on three sides, the south, east, and west, and then loading doors on the north, with then a larger paved area up adjacent to the telecommunications site. That's the general layout for the site as a whole, and I'll get into some of the pieces on that. So they are requesting site plan approval. The building is 132,000 square foot speculative industrial warehouse, speculative meaning that there is no identified tenant at this time, and partial office. The proposed building and parking lot do comply with the district standards, as where in your packet for setbacks, impervious surface limits, height, architecture, things like that. And there are no proposed modifications to the telecommunications tower other than the separated office and its own parcel. So it's still maintaining the two equipment shelters, they're each approximately 350 square feet in size, and there's no other standards for the lot to comply for the ES district, however, they did attempt to comply with the preliminary plat standards, which is part of the administrative subdivision. So just dedicating easements for DNU surrounding that site. So they are connecting to public utilities because it is in the MUSA, and they do have, the landscaping complies with the required numbers of plant materials, landscape area, and screening. However, because we did receive some questions, we can request reorganization of those landscaping areas if you feel it's important to have additional landscaping in alternative areas, so focusing on one of the property lines. That can be a request with the site plan. Access, so there are three accesses, the parcel A, two are proposed from Territorial on the south, with one on the west to Dayton Parkway. Staff is recommending, based on conversations with Hennepin County in common from Hennepin County, that the access to Dayton Parkway, not shown on the plans, have just the accesses on Territorial. That is specifically because staff is intending to turn over Dayton Parkway to the county at a future date that has not been identified, and to do so, we need to meet their access spacing guidelines, and this does not comply by having an access here. However, their staff does, has had conversations about potentially having a right into the site to alleviate some traffic as it moves towards the railroad and towards the overpass area, but that has not been agreed to by Hennepin County at this time. So that'd have to be an ongoing conversation. So at this point, staff is recommending that the access on Dayton Parkway be removed from the plans. Parcel B, which is the telecommunications site, does have an existing access across the railroad right-of-way. That'll be preserved and maintained as it's the existing access the site or the telecommunications uses at this time. For parking, office use requires one space per 200 square feet of floor area. The warehouse requires one space per employee in the maximum shift, or 2,000 square feet. In this case, it's the 2,000 square feet we use because we don't know the employees at this point. So plans do provide 153 parking stalls, which is above the minimum 125 that's required for the building of that size. They do have proof of parking shown on the plans in two separate areas. One is on the south side on Territorial. It's actually shown in the setback area, so that proof of parking is a condition to be removed from the plans. However, the other proof of parking area on the east side could be constructed if there was a demonstrated need for that parking, but they're already over the minimum parking by 28 stalls, so at this time, they are not willing to put it in. The loading and storage areas, so plans show 19 semi-trailer loading areas along the north side of the proposed building. They have that, that's a accessory use for semi-trailer parking on the north side as well. So the proposed semi-trailer parking does comply with the ordinance standards in the zoning ordinance, which allows a ratio of semi-trailer parking. So there's the loading areas, and then there's the parking areas, those two separate loading areas by the building, parking areas north of the building on the other side. You can have .35 to 1 is the ratio of the semi-trailer parking to the building area, so they can have, sorry, not the building area, to the parking area. So they can have 9,240, or they have 9,240 square feet, where they could have to 46,200 square feet of semi-trailer parking. There is a condition in there on the staff report and the resolution that is a piece of the code, that if they were to have multi-tenants that would use these spaces for the semi-trailer parking individually for their own uses, they do need to receive a CUP before they can do so. So if this is a single-tenant facility, they can have it as part of the facility as a whole. If it's a multi-tenant facility, they have to distinguish who's using what spaces and apply for a CUP as part of that. And that's a section from, existing section from the code. Architecture, there's a variety of colors, materials, articulations, and windows that are proposed. They are in compliance with the ordinance standards for variety of materials, color articulation, percentages, things like that. It will be pre-cast concrete with a mix of colors and textures. Building height is 38.6 feet in height, which is under the height limit, so they meet that standard as well. Stormwater management, so this one's a little more complicated. They, I'll give the background. There was, when Dayton Parkway went in, there was an agreement between the city and this parcel that when it developed, the city would provide for six acres or 60% of the site in stormwater management. That did not get accomplished with the Dayton Parkway project, so we're accomplishing that now. That required some revisions to the stormwater management plan, which was initially one of the reasons why it got tabled. So they had to work through some of those revisions to the stormwater management. As far as the solution to that, there's going to be both onsite and offsite stormwater treatment provided through one and/or two pipes that will be under Dayton Parkway. There's an existing, Jason, feel free to correct me if any of this is wrong, existing 15-inch stormwater pipe to the north that will convey a portion of the stormwater site to the offsite basins, and the existing stormwater would need to be upgraded to take on the additional stormwater that would be part of this development. So a new 30-inch storm sewer will convey that water from onsite to offsite through the basins, and the existing offsite basins, which are on the parcel across Dayton Parkway that the city owns, will be expanded to accommodate that offsite stormwater, offsite being the OPUS moving to that site. So they're continuing to work through and refine these plans. That is the design in place currently, and there'll be some, you know, there's engineering comments from Jason on what needs to be addressed to meet stormwater requirements, but that is the plan. How that gets, you know, the cost share between it, because the city is responsible for the 60% of that, has to be a discussion once we have cost estimates in place. We don't have those right now, but that'll be part of a site improvement agreement, site improvement performance agreement that will be between the city and the developer to lay out how that happens and who's financing what pieces, whether it's a credit in stormwater area charges up to a certain point, and then if we go past that, then there has to be either the city's participation in the project, and those things will get handled as part of that site improvement performance agreement based on the cost estimates that come back for upgrading that storm sewer pipe. So I ran through a lot pretty quickly, because most of it was in the packet, and nothing was out of the ordinary in terms of not meeting any ordinance standards. So tonight, planning commissioners should discuss the requests and make a recommendation, including any additional conditions for approval or reasons for denial on the applications. So you do have, I'll go back to the site plan, that's usually where we end up, administrative subdivision rezoning and site plan before we decide. And if there are any questions for staff, we can take those now, and then the applicant is present as well. And we have continued on a public hearing, so we will need to hold a public hearing and then close the public hearing as well.
One question I have, Kevin, is just understanding when you guys last spoke to Hennepin County about the curb cut on Dayton Parkway. I might be in favor of write-in only, but I just want to understand the history of when, when's the last time we talked to them, and the context of it all. And, you know, before you speak, Jason, I guess, the context of it all, you know, I was driving up by Cubes, and I guess I'm just pretty disappointed in how that ended up in front of Cubes, and Hennepin County drove that. So I want to make sure we go into this pretty, doing what we think is best for not only, largely what's best for Dayton Parkway. Secondly, is what's best for the site, but when you get into this site, it's such a quick right turn, and then a left turn, and then another left turn, and I'm a little concerned about that from a safety standpoint, as well as blocking traffic on Dayton Parkway, because there's only room for one semi. If there happens to be three cement trucks sitting there, you know, the semi truck can't even turn and make that left turn under the next road. So I just want to make sure we're communicating to the county why, maybe, if we think it's appropriate, why we're thinking it's appropriate.
And I'll let Jason handle that, just because he's the one having conversations with Hennepin County.
Yeah, last conversations were March of this year. So introduced in February and told that it would not be considered, asked a second time, and it's reiterated in March that it would not be considered. Did request specifically a write-in, or a write-in, write-out, or specifically a write-in, is what we supported. And the intention was to alleviate, exactly as you pointed out, the intersection of Holly Lane, and then again with Holly Lane and Territorial, and then Territorial and the entrance. Just given the spacing of those, even stacked two semi trucks is going to block traffic. So that was the intent, to alleviate the intersections as much as possible and have people enter that way. Still, they referred back to their spacing guidelines.
Is it fair to say that the staff might support this then, but obviously, if we support it, the applicant should be aware that someday the county might close it on you too?
That is an option. As of now, it's full jurisdiction of the city to allow or not allow the access. It's been clear through the communications with the county that it would not be, or that that would be, or very well could be, a deal breaker, if you will, for the jurisdictional transfer at a later date. So that being said, the city could allow one to occur now and then see what happens. They may say, no, we're not going to take it. They may say conditional on a closing. That would be up to them at the time.
Yeah, I mean, it's unrelated to this, but my frustration is I'm working on a project in Dakota County with heavy truck traffic, and those engineers said straight up that write-ins is what they're doing for a landfill site and a garbage recycler for this very specific reason, and they refuse to even consider roundabouts because of truck traffic. And that's why I'm losing faith in Hennepin County, when we put 3 million square feet of industrial here, and they drive the roundabout there. I mean, 3 million, and one of the users is a million square feet distribution center. There's going to be a lot of truck traffic going through that roundabout.
I think I echo your concerns there, and I would support from an engineering perspective, and it probably doesn't mean a whole lot coming from the city, because Hennepin County does ultimately control that conversation. But a write-in specifically, I think, from an engineering perspective, makes a lot of sense. Write-in, write-out, I think is a little bit more challenging, because, you know, these trucks likely want to get to 94. And a write-out pushes them to 81, and just pushes them in a roundabout way to get to the 94 corridor, pushes them to, you know, inadequate signal at 81 and Dayton Parkway. I don't even know if there's enough room for a full semi truck to get in between the tracks and the signal as it is now. So write-out, no. Write-in, yes. I think it just makes a ton of sense, and anything we can do to try to push the county that way, I've worked with Hennepin County, I get it. They're going to say what they're going to say, and they will lean on those access spacing guidelines. They are very black and white to them. But I think in a site like this, it makes a lot of sense for a lot of what you pointed out in that it's a complicated kind of transportation setup with Territorial Road, and, you know, having the quick right, then a left, then a left again. There isn't a ton of stacking to get trucks out. But I think, I think that's a sacrifice we'd be willing to make. Write-in, I think, is very helpful for the site. I just think it works for site circulation so much better. But I understand that that's out of our hands very likely, but we can, you know, hopefully push staff to push Hennepin County as much as we can.
That's all I had for staff.
Yeah, there's no other questions for staff. We can open the public hearing now that applicant can forward.
Then we will, we will open the public hearing at 6:51, and if the applicant's present. Please come forward and state your name and address, and.
Good evening, commissioners. Joe Mahoney with OPUS Development, 10350 Bren Road West, Minnetonka, 55343.
Brady Busselman, Samba Tech, 12800 Whitewater Drive, Minnetonka, 55423.
Well, first of all, thank you for having us tonight. I know it's been a little process to get to this point, but we are very excited to keep this moving forward. I think our comments were probably already mentioned earlier. We're okay with all the conditions within the report, except for that item 2A, the write-in or the access, I'll say. I think we're very amenable to going just to write-in to the site, understand maybe how the write-out and how those trucks might impact Dayton Parkway, but really getting the truck traffic into the site. We did hear, actually very recently, that a user would like to actually be able to drive through the site, and having that would allow that user to come to the site. They're currently not in the city of Dayton. It'd be great to have them locate here, and they would be a full-building user for that tenant. I don't have much more to say. I think the presentation was very thorough, but happy to answer any questions that you may have.
What is the purpose of subdividing the communication tower from the site, just so we have a little context?
Yeah, because that's currently an easement area, and what that does, it is, it allows us to have a separate tax parcel and have them have full responsibility for it. And at some point in the future, we're not in the business of owning cell phone towers, so if at some point in the future they want to own it on their own, it provides that opportunity. So it really just bifurcates the two very separate and unique assets. Anything else from a civil perspective?
No.
I think it also cleans up the access to the cell phone tower, because that's currently on the railroad property.
Yeah, that's a fair point. Currently, the access is through the railroad right-of-way, so this dedicates an access to an actual kind of bike right-of-way, Dayton Parkway.
If we were to recommend to the council to give you guys a write-in, I'm not seeing it, but I'm assuming there's room for a turning lane coming into it?
Yeah, so mid-tier standard for deceleration, clean, free right is at a 40 mile per hour roadway, I believe, and off the top of my head, I think it's 314 feet. Typically, they want to see 300 plus 180, but this is, again, you're not providing any stacking for vehicles that are free right, and there is 314 feet available. We discussed earlier that 12-foot turn lane would put the roadway pretty close to the existing right-of-way, but Joe indicated they'd be open to discussing additional easements that's needed for that, if that were to go forward.
Yes, I don't really have any additional comment on anything on the site. I mean, I think most of what I've seen here seems to be, seem to be pretty reasonable. It looks like it's well thought out, and it would be a pretty decent addition for what is already kind of occurring going up and down 81. And then, you know, just right down the road from here, there's another good spot of industrial, so I think it just kind of fits with what's kind of lining up on that area right now.
I've got one other thing for us to chew on, whether or not we'd want to recommend to city council. Could you go to the landscape plan? Do you have that in your presentation by any chance?
I don't specifically, the landscape.
Okay. In the packet, you'll see that. We don't have, there's a lot of landscaping on the site. They meet the requirements for the ordinance on the site, and most of that landscaping is occurring basically on three perimeters of the site, but none of which against 81 and the railroad tracks there. And I think primarily because there is already vegetation there. There is some trees, probably not very desirable, desirable trees, but none of which the current landowner controls. So if at some time BNSF, Hennepin County on their side, because there's some trees on the Hennepin County side as well, decides they want to clearcut some of those, we probably don't have screening along that area. And just wanted to get kind of the temperature from the rest of the commission here of, do we want to try and get some screening on this site in case that were to happen? Potentially not full screening, but some, in case that were to occur. Because, you know, I don't think the city would be party to that discussion if those trees were to come down later, nor would the property owner.
From the applicant's perspective, is there room to do that? I know you guys are looking at it.
Let me double-check the grading plan, but I believe there is, there's horizontal distance sufficient to put some trees in, maybe some shrubs as well, they're low coverage.
You know, and considering that's the loading dock side of it, you know, that might be something to think about.
Yeah, looks like we're slowing down pretty tight, 3 to 1, but you can plant on 3 to 1. So horizontally and vertically, there's room to, what I'd say.
I believe when this came to us first time, we had, I forget what the conclusion was, but I remember have us having a lot of conversation about this.
I mean, the thought, I, it's an original, because, you know, as you drive, what, they kind of northwest from here on 81, and you start to get to the rest of that industrial, most of it really is, at this moment at least, pretty visible.
Yeah.
As we see there.
Yeah, it certainly is.
To me, I feel like this wouldn't cause a ton of impact if that wasn't available there. Obviously, it's always nice to have screening, especially when you've got, you know, a loading area.
Yeah, I don't disagree. It's not, it wouldn't be drastically different than what's further to the east, per se. Just something to consider, you know.
And if I recall correctly, what we talked about at the meeting is that we would be okay if some trees on the south side of the site, facing semstone, just shifted to that area.
Yeah, I think we can certainly look at relocating some of the southern-facing trees up there.
Especially because that's going to be the nice desaster ability to begin with.
Right.
That side is just going to be facing other industrial, so.
Good suggestion. Thank you.
Other than that, I really don't have any other comments. I think, you know, it's kind of challenging for the shape of the site. The transportation's challenging. I think, I think they've done the best that they can with it.
I think, uh, my comment I have is architecturally, I don't, I don't, I don't think it meets the architectural standards of accent materials. It's just all painted pre-cast. You know, there's a, a metal canopy at the doors apparently, but I don't know how big that is, or how much that extends out, but, uh, it looks like all the features are just painted pre-cast, and, I mean, I'd have to look back word for word, and I apologize for not doing that before, but, yeah, no, would you usually look for a little bit of metal panel use or something that breaks up, um, just the pre-cast aesthetic? But it looks like all the design features right now are just painted pre-cast. Is that correct?
Um, do you have those architectural plans?
I don't have.
You don't have?
I mean, I don't know how the rest of the commission feels about it. I mean, they, you have done a nice job.
Yep.
I assume the dark gray frames are those, something that could stick out from the building, or have like a little?
Yep, yeah.
Plain depth to it?
Right, and if we have some plans here referenced, I apologize, I did not print those out. Uh, we have the ribbing, as you can see, and these are just two snapshots here.
Yeah.
And I'm not an architect. I wish my architect was here so he could speak better to the plans, um, and what's shown on the paper. Uh, but they really like incorporating those for some play on the lights and texture to it. And we also, uh, usually, uh, offset the panels, uh, to provide some variations, so it's not as much of a long, length law in front of the building.
In the landscape plans, it looks like there's a little bit in and out. It's hard to tell. I mean, I'd love to see those, like, dark gray frames be something that stick out. You know, if you don't change materials, you know, could those come out a couple feet or something, and really become a, a nice entry archway or something, you know, or? I know it's not the easiest of the pre-cast building to, to do that kind of thing, but.
I, I could see us looking at maybe having that, that whole section of panels coming out, but just the U-shape is, is probably pretty difficult to do.
Yeah.
Like this.
Yeah, especially at the kind of main, and I know, again, you know, it's multi-tenant building potentially, but, you know, maybe those three kind of main entry frames that you have, you know, could those come out a little bit farther, or something that really kind of breaks up the building and provides some more definition.
Hey, well, uh, I'll take a look at that, make sure that we have, uh, the appropriate plans sent in for the city council.
Yeah, I mean, obviously more money, but, you know, could that be metal panel, those frames? Dress it up even a little bit more.
Just to confirm, they are pre-cast, um, concrete painted. There's, I was looking to get the, so there is textured pre-cast concrete, and then regular non-textured pre-cast concrete, and there's two varieties of the textures and four varieties of the pre-cast. So they have six different varieties, but it is all pre-cast concrete, and that does meet our ordinance standards for the industrial district. Specifically, it would not in commercial or other districts, but that's just because we only require varieties in, uh, not the material, but the, the variation between the color types.
Okay.
But if we want to, because it is a visible site, if you, the request is to dress it up a little bit more with some other varieties, that can certainly be your, a request.
Yeah, I think just my request would be thoughtful. You know, these are big buildings. It's not the biggest building in the neighborhood. But, you know, just anything you can do to break down scale and, um, whether it's a little bit more in and out, or a different material or something, uh, I think really goes a long way.
I would agree. I would second that. Um, it is, you know, as shown on the site plan, basically just a box, so if you can find a way to play with some depth there and bring some dimension to it aside from just finishes and colors. Um, I, I think, given the location of the site, given the visibility of the site, I, I think also given, you know, it was previously sold to commercial. I know we made the decision to go over to industrial. It's right there on the edge. Um, I, I think, you know, if anything, this would be a spot to try to incorporate some of, some of that where possible.
We can certainly look at that and see what we can do to enhance that.
Thank you.
We have any other questions for the applicants, then?
Not for the applicants. I got one more for staff, if, uh, this is the appropriate time. Jason, what plans do we potentially have for pedestrian facilities on territorial road? I know it's code to have a pedestrian access, and that sidewalk's shown to the road there, but is that going to be a sidewalk to nowhere?
Uh, as far as I know, there is not plans for anything along territorial, as it deadends to the east. Are you, are you referring to the east, or?
Yeah, so on the site, they're coming from the building. Code requires a pedestrian access route out from there, and it's wrapping along the west side of that Easterly access, and the sidewalk just dies, right? It just dies at territorial. I mean, I, I, I highly doubt this is a heavy, uh, pedestrian area, and I didn't know whether or not we had plans to put a sidewalk on territorial, if that, you know, in a future reconstruction project or not. I know it's tough to go against code. That, that seems just kind of like a weird feature of the site, something that they're gonna clear snow from for no reason, probably. You know, and, and that's sometimes how, what code does deal. Sometimes if you're gonna codify something like that, it, it's not a one-size-fits-all all the time, unfortunately. Just wondering if you had any perspective on, on pedestrian use of that area, uh, current or future?
Uh, not that I'm aware of, that it's been considered in the future.
Yeah, I don't, I certainly don't mind having, you know, some spot for those people that are parked on those southern bays to be able to, hey, this is your identified way to get across to the front of the building, but actually wrapped around the west side of that entrance, I don't know. That's taking them probably nowhere.
And plus territorial's a dead-end road.
Right. So, you know, maybe save the applicant a little bit of money, not a lot of money, but.
Yeah, maybe they'll spend it on architectural.
Or a tree or two, um, but, you know, long, long-term costs, too. It's not something that they're gonna have to plow.
Kevin, if we were to make that suggestion to council, is that a variance or just a condition that maybe that?
Trying to look. Yeah, to make sure there's not, there's language that we can vary from that standard.
Yeah, I'm thinking, just as a site plan, there's, I guess I'm gonna interpret it, there's, there's some wiggle room that the commission and council has in order to, if you want to change the landscaping requirements.
And I appreciate staff, if, if staff has said, hey, this is the code, you have to draw this on there, absolutely, because it is the code. Um, but then it's for, for us to make recommendations in city council ultimately to approve or, or not, whether or not that site plan makes sense. Um, so, you know, great, great on applicant, great on staff for making sure that the drawings match our code, 'cause it could have very easily been something that was just missed, and then it gets approved on the site plan, and we don't know it. So, um, good job there, but I just wonder if we want to think about that a little harder.
Well, and could that just be treated somewhere to like the future parking, right, and just dash it in?
Yeah.
If there are various sidewalks put in by the city or the developments, then they could, you know, behoove them to connect to it, but.
So we do have a little bit in the code that's wiggle room, just because there's the language where the sidewalk access is deemed, where sidewalk access to an existing act, existing sidewalk is present today, or a reasonable connection is possible, so we could deem that that's not reasonable, because there is no future sidewalk plan for territorial road.
Yep. I think that makes some sense.
If I could just add on here, I just looked up a plan that was previously approved immediately south of here, and there is actually a sidewalk along there. I haven't seen it on any comprehensive or city planning documents, however it was on their, their plan as well.
And it did get built that way?
And, and the project never moved. They got their approvals, but they never constructed, so it's.
Talking the Scannell site.
Scannell site immediately.
Okay. That makes me feel better that it's not been constructed that way.
Probably 'cause they don't pay for the sidewalk.
'Cause I, I would, I would probably reconsider if precedent has been set on something constructed that way, and have one user do something that the other user doesn't have to. Maybe it wouldn't, wouldn't be the best thing to do, but if that's not been constructed, I think my thought stands. That's it for me.
Okay.
All right. Great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that would like to, uh, speak during the public forum about the, uh, the development that, uh, that's before us? Doesn't look like that, so with that, we will close the public forum at, uh, seven oh nine PM. Do we, uh, do we have any other, any other discussion?
You know, I'm leaning towards making an approval and recommending to the council that they do allow the write-in, write-in. I hope staff can, especially 'cause this meeting's not being videoed, can adequately express some of the opinions up here about, I get there's these challenges with Hennepin County, but I think we need to do a better job explaining to Hennepin County why we're doing what we're doing, and why we believe in it, instead of, instead of always just doing what they say. And I get it, they might, they, so what, but, you know, we, I think, and again, the applicant is gonna have, understand there's some risk involved with it. With that being said, I don't think we're turning over Dayton Parkway in the next ten years to Hennepin County. It might be in fifteen years. I don't know when the next phase gets constructed, but the next phase is at least seven years old, 'cause we haven't started anything.
That's a good point. I mean, we, we do hold that now. I mean, we, we do want to get Hennepin County involved and not jeopardize the, the possibility of turning that back. I, I don't know whether or not Hennepin County would not take something like that just because of a, a just a write-in, right? We're talking, I think their access spacing guidelines are eighth mile, right? So six hundred and sixty feet, it's like three hundred, so I mean, it's, it's significantly less than their access spacing guideline, but it's also a quarter movement that's being proposed. Well, half movement was proposed, but it sounds like the applicant is amenable to the quarter movement, right? We're talking, um, getting really, you know, trying to get as close as we can to meeting the intent of what they want, but hopefully some engineering judgment on their side, um, can prevail on it. Um, I just, I, I don't see them turning away accepting this road in ten or fifteen years simply because of a write-in. Write-in, write-out, maybe. Write-in, I don't know.
Sure, and no wiggle room right now with Hennepin County doesn't necessarily mean no wiggle room in ten or fifteen years, but this actually comes before them.
And I think we heard from the applicant, too. It, it, it sounds like if they can't get just a write-in there, that, it's very difficult for the prospects of their project. Not that it would be that, but it's.
It was a tough site for a commercial because of access. It's still a tough site, even with industrial because of access, so that's why I think it, we have to consider it. And I get it that council's gonna have to make a decision on it. That's why, again, I hope staff can adequately express why we think they should grant the write-in.
Yeah, and fair staff's on the same stuff as you.
Yeah, and I, I would imagine city council would agree, I think, but the, the bigger challenge I had would be, would be Hennepin County, and, you know, opt to counsel to see whether or not they would want to gamble that potentially. I don't, but I, I would agree. I, I would support planning commission recommendation for that.
Mr. Vice Chair, a question for Jason. So I know that the right-of-way is tight, so assuming the, the recommendation from planning commission council is to add the write-in in a right turn lane. Um, I'm assuming that we would need additional right-of-way rather than a easement?
Well, I mean, it could be a, the highway easement, for example, for right-of-way purposes, but additional right-of-way would be the preferred, um, if that's amenable to the applicant.
So if, if it's right-of-way, that, that kind of shifts everything to the east.
That moves setbacks and others. If there was any implications because of it, we could consider a highway easement, then the setbacks won't become an issue, but right-of-way would be the cleanest and provide the most flexibility.
And I'm assuming that when this goes to council, a site plan can be updated, so that, that question can come out, uh, when council's making that decision?
That'd be up to the applicant, but yes. I mean, they would, they would produce the update and figure out what effect that can be done.
So I'm thinking additional right-of-way would probably likely shorten the building, you know, just looking at the site plan by.
Depends on how much of the turning lane can go in the right-of-way, existing right-of-way.
Yep.
Hard to see on a small drawing, to see exactly how the distances. That's something that we'll at least have an answer for, for our post-council.
So.
Yeah, I think the other aspects of this request are pretty simple. It's a site plan reveal that I think we're chewing on, but the other aspects are, are pretty simple of the request.
So we have a lot subdivision, site plan, and what else on the?
There's the administrative subdivision, rezoning of both parcels from, um, B four to I one for the Opus site, and to ES, our essential services for the telecommunications site, and then the site plan. Those are the three combinations.
I will make a motion to approve the administrative subdivision, site plan as presented with a write-in-only access on Dayton Parkway, and rezoning of the industrial site to B four, or, excuse me, from B four to I one, and a rezoning of the telecommunications tower to ES.
Do we want to consider the sidewalk as a part of that?
And as part of that, I would suggest recommending to the council, too, that we eliminate the sidewalk requirement on this parcel.
Reshuffle the trees.
And I would suggest to, for the landscaping plan to shift some trees on the south side of the property to the north side of the property.
Okay, second.
All right.
Just a question for clarification. By moving the trees, I'm assuming you're meaning all along that, uh, the railroad?
I'm adding the trees to that area.
Whatever number of trees those.
So, when you look at.
Keeping the same number of trees.
Same number of trees, to shift some of the trees on the south end of the property to the north end of the property.
And staff could work with the applicant on which trees make the most sense.
Okay. There's also a discussion of bumping out the facade. And it's not part of the motion.
I will entertain comments before I amend my motion, I guess. I, my take is I'm, I'm impartial. I.
Yeah, I mean, I think if, if it's meeting the, the requirements of accent materials for industrial area, it's hard to request additional things. I think the applicant could still consider it, um, but I don't think it should be a part of the.
Tough to condition it on.
Yeah, yeah.
Agreed.
Yeah, 'cause the code language requires them to meet at least three, and that's of the following, and they do meet at least three.
Yeah.
The variety of materials is just one of the ones that.
Yep.
No amendment to the motion?
No amendment to the motion.
All right, so we have a motion, and I believe it was the second from, uh, from Nick as well, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. All right, we will be moving on, uh.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We'll be moving on to item eight, discussion of planning commission priorities as part of our new business.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. This was a pretty short meeting. I didn't want to go home early.
Thank you.
You're, you're very welcome. So, uh, I'm gonna take this opportunity to, to bring forward, uh, the city council's twenty twenty-three goals for discussion. I, I don't believe the, the commission has ever discussed that so, and kind of looking through, uh, the files, we, we've been doing goals at least since the, uh, early to mid two thousands. Um, until for twenty twenty-three, we have kind of four categories. Category one is build quality infrastructure. Category two is planning ahead and manage thoughtful development. Uh, three is preserving our rural character, and four is create a sought-after community. Um, so within the packet, there's, there's a short version and a long version. What's shown on the screen is the short version. Additionally, the, the council has provided staff with additional, um, uh, projects, uh, that's listed in the staff reports, so, such as, uh, creating or amending the residential estate zoning district, um, just reviewing zoning districts in general, parking standards. So I, I think this was more specific to, uh, parking standards for multifamily garage sizes, zoning codes related to businesses, and this was specific to, um, are there any, is there anything in the zoning code that is an inhibitor to business, businesses? Um, and then, uh, zoning code updates to comply with the comprehensive plan. So, and once again, the general thought, or my suggestion, is it's about, let's say a quarter or a little bit more after seven, of just setting a, a timeline of how much discussion would you like to have, you know, whether it's high-level or very detailed, um, that this is your time to give us direction.
I'm assuming we're trying to set priorities for twenty twenty-four now?
Yes, twenty twenty-three is almost up.
The priority number one by, by city council was residential estate. Do you have, was that like updated recently, or was that like, 'cause I feel like we did a bunch on that in twenty twenty-two, and then it just went quiet. And I guess if we're gonna restart. And I guess if we're going to restart it, I guess I'd really like to know how to restart it, meaning what's council's take on everything we already did? Like where, where are we going next? I guess that'd be my only question, so.
I can provide some background on that one. There was work done, uh, it wasn't by me, it was by Kendra Lindell, but, um, to bring forward a cluster ordinance, that was that residential estate. There was a lot of work and discussion about a cluster ordinance.
Wasn't that all 2022?
All of it was in 2022 from about, it might be off in the months, but about June to September or October. Um, and when it went to city council, there wasn't support to move it any further to actually adopt an ordinance amendment to put that in place. So the effort kind of died there as there was a lack of wanting to push it forward, as they didn't like the cluster ordinance and how it would have taken place or affect on those to put that in place. So revisiting that could certainly happen. Cluster ordinances are kind of the only option for a community that's designated as urban or having sewer service by the Met Council to develop with a more of a rural lot size in the interim, you know, between now and when it would get developed at the urban with sewer and water. You kind of have to put a cluster ordinance in place to do that. Unlike other communities that I can think of that are similar, Corcoran and Ramsey are both urban with a rural environment outside of the Musa. It's because they're not designated as having ultimate sewer service from Met Council. And that's where Dayton differs. Dayton is proposed to be entirely served by Met Council, whereas Corcoran and Ramsey are not. And so that's where that cluster ordinance has to come into play to be able to do smaller lot sizes preserving open area or having some of those larger lot sizes as well.
From my perspective, I would move that priority way down the list from a standpoint, we don't even have an applicant coming here to want to do it, and we already spent a lot of time on it unless council has some other logic or direction of why they want priority number one. That's why I'm seeing, I see this as priority number one.
And we'll say that we, we have two property owners within the post-2050 areas that would like to develop.
And I think that that's, well, so priority number one to me would be getting our comp plan understood because our 2050 is wrong. Meaning we way underestimated our growth when we did our 2040 zoning at 120 homes a year, even in what's really slow market, well, how many homes are we at this year?
I'm, I'm going to say around 170 so far.
Yeah, I think I saw close to 200 on the census bureau, but anyway, even, even in a really rough time to develop, we're above that. And so anyway, if we develop at 200 a year, everything in 2050, or everything gets bumped up in the staging plan. So that was my whole fear with just looking at 2050 to begin with is that, hold on, it's not 2050, that's, that's just so wrong. And so to me, that should be a higher priority is understanding what's a realistic plan and a staging plan. And I get it, it's part of our next comp plan update and it's only 2023, so I get that. But that's why it frustrates me having conversations about acting like our plan's right with 2050. It's no different than acting like the plan's right east of the cubes with the DDL holding site and us not understanding the comp plan, how it changed, and they're doing EAW stuff and we just don't know it. So to me, all of our priorities should be in the current staging and understanding our staging. So we don't get development that we don't want number one. And one, if it's in the current staging, if our plan says you can do it, even though our road shifted and the, the plan's never been updated.
I would agree. I, I think that is probably a priority that should move down the ladder, at least from our perspective, if a lot of work was done up here for that and then it went forward and died, are we going to re-cook it over here? Or, or is, do you focus on a different priority if it didn't have, if it didn't have the support or traction, hearing, hearing staff say cluster ordinance is the only way to do it, but maybe city council didn't like that, it's the only way to do it and it's.
I'm not against the site even for getting the cluster ordinance. Somehow you can convince the Met Council, which I don't think we can, that's why I keep saying not doing it, but somehow you can convince the Met Council that for whatever reason, this area has such unique environmental characteristics or topography or whatever it might be, that maybe it is well-suited for, you know, a two and a half acre per lot development.
You got a better chance of convincing Hennepin County to take a write-only.
Yeah.
Met Council.
So if we're going to do it, we have to have all this, we just don't have it. So that's why I, I'd prefer we focus on where development might occur next and so we're not taken back by, oh my God, something's happening again, but potentially with the DDL holdings and we don't even know what's going on with our comp plan and land uses to the east of that site. Like if I'm up here on a planning commission, I struggle, how do I approve a DDL site that is one use, not knowing what the use next door is eventually going to be? Because we all know, maybe it'll be what the comp plan says, but we all know that it's at risk of changing because the road shifted. And so that's what I don't like doing as a planning commissioner is how do I evaluate an application when I know something's wrong in our plan? I'd rather have our plan right, so then everything flows and has synergy. So to me, focusing on the plan, even though maybe it's not a priority because we don't have development activity, that's fine, but waiting to focus on our comp plan, it just seems like we got so much to do, we should get started. And in particular, in the current staging area and then the 2020 staging area and keep going beyond that.
I wonder if we do start with talking about the zoning and if we can really get that piece right, it kind of turns into a prerequisite naturally for a lot of the other pieces as well, so just by nature of that, we might start knocking other items off of this list.
Yeah. And, you know, my background, I look at land use plans all the time and zoning. Zoning starts with your land use plan. So once you've identified your land uses, now you start saying, yeah, we need to change your zoning code or not. And our zoning code, I mean, it's just dated because we haven't had development before. So the zoning districts are all going to, like our commercial zoning districts, never been updated. When we actually start getting commercial development, I don't know, I don't know if it is good or bad. We're going to find out when we start getting applications, I guess. I know the industrial one wasn't the greatest because it was just dated, that's all, it wasn't, the multifamily and parking. And at, at the last council meeting, I listened in and I heard a lot of council members share some of our thoughts that, that they're not a big fan of detached garage stalls. Well, then maybe that gets moved up the list of, let's get that figured out and codify it that, you know what, we want multifamily to have underground garages or structured parking.
So if I'm hearing you right, it sounds like that might be a priority for us, those, those two items of can we figure out commercial, what we want, so that when we do get an application for a commercial, it's more, it's fresh and consistent with what we're looking for and multifamily potentially as well, because that's what's next. And industrial is, is here, we know that, we're seeing a lot of it, commercial and multifamily are next, we've already seen some multifamily.
Yeah, we've been getting multifamily.
And we're going to have a long pause in development. Opus, that was just here. They're probably not even going to break ground, and it's the reasons why Scannell hasn't broke ground. Everyone wants to get their sites entitled and watch interest rates, but as soon as those interest rates drop, maybe they don't, we're going to be hit hard with development. Everyone's going to be busy again, busier than they are now. And so that's why we should take advantage of this time of getting better prepared.
Sure, yep.
And so I'm more focused on the comp plan and, and the zoning that flows out of it, I guess.
Yeah, I agree. And even though it is only, like you said, 2023, so we're still probably what, three to, three to five years away from starting, talking about the, the next decade's comp plan. We're kind of really in the middle of making zoning changes anyways. We've got the small area plan that's going to require adjustments to the comp plan or an amendment to the comp plan as is, and we're potentially talking about other, other changes that might also have similar impact, so might not, might serve us well with just broadening that, broadening the scope of that a little bit. Provide what guidance we can to the council and see how they, how they take that.
You know, one of our biggest challenges as a city, like with development in general, is we lack roads. Like there's certain cities that have lots of roads. St. Michael has quite a few roads.
Yeah.
You know, in fact, they kind of develop all over the place because they have quite a few roads, you know? We have Fernbrook, in South Dayton and Fernbrook. And so I get, I don't, I get it, Dayton Parkway is going to cost a whole load of money, but at some point in time, people need to realize that we need to start planning it, because when you start planning it, it takes five or seven years before you even break ground. And so just because you start planning, it doesn't mean you do all the heavy, you, you start with the land use discussion that we're doing, which is good, but don't forget about South of 117th because we need to focus on that more probably than north because of its current staging. But I would like to see us keep moving forward with the plan and, and, you know, it's up to council to figure out how to pay for it, but, and, and that's why we got to wait, whatever amount of time, we got to wait, you know, until we get partners, until we get grants, whatever. But I'd like to keep seeing that slowly moving forward too, is the plan, how it's going to lay out, what are the land uses? Business-friendly stuff, I can't tell you how many times I've watched EDA meetings and they talk about, the, the whole village has the same issue, is that you, you just don't have the traffic volume on the roads, and if you increase the traffic volume to get commercial users, then you got to upgrade the road. So it's like this whole process, the, the intersection on 81 and Territorial is the same thing. It's like what comes first? Do you put the stoplight in or do you put the houses in? And to me, I don't think we should be holding up that project because of the intersection of the city. I think we should be figuring out how to get the intersection in and let, the project's going to be held up on its own because of the interest rates, but we need to just keep figuring, if everyone keeps saying the intersection's the reason why we don't do the project, which I heard that at the council meeting non-stop, we need to figure out how to get the intersection in. And that, that's outside of the planning commission, but it's related to all these land uses and development concepts that, you know, we're figuring our way forward, I guess, our path forward.
Other thoughts? So kind of what, what I'm hearing, just to summarize, and I'm not going to put these in, in any particular order other than the first one, is to compare our zoning code to the comprehensive plan and also is, are there things in both that don't make a whole lot of sense? And so we're, we're not going to pursue a comp plan amendment, but perhaps starting the 2050 comp plan well ahead of time so that we're prepared, you know, in, just from memory or from my turn. Observation, I guess I'll say, is when we did the 2040 comp plan, it, it felt a little rushed because we were, you know, staff was busy. You know, staff is still busy, but we don't have as many, we don't have as many projects coming in the next year, year and a half, we've got time to, to kind of lay the groundwork for the next comp, comp plan. Additionally, looking at, I'm just going to call it transportation planning because it's easy, but that's incompatible, all in, I can't pronounce that word. It includes a lot of stuff there that's specific to roads and roadways and then also to look at, uh, parking, but that, that's a little bit more detailed. So, you know, an example given, you know, structured parking for multifamily.
If the conclusion continues to be that we want structured parking or below-grade parking, we should probably codify that sooner than later.
I agree. Anything else on goals?
I would second that, just continue to look at that transportation plan with Dayton Parkway, just the importance of understanding how that's all going to work and where it's going to go and how it impacts the, you know, surrounding developments. That should be a very high priority because it's our one chance to get a new primary road right. So the more time and voices we have that impact, hopefully the better chances is that we're going to be successful.
Yep. Unfortunately, there's a whole lot of farmland through there, so.
Harris. I mean, I'd also encourage us in the council, like the preserving the rural character, like, how do you do that along that road?
I don't, I don't know what you do.
I don't know how you preserve the rural character, period, in perpetuity. Obviously, when the city's developed, what, how are we, we going to have a rural char- I mean, this is 30 years, 40 years from now. What's going to be rural about it? I don't know. I've always struggled with what is rural too.
Well, and Met Council kind of said some of that for us, because like you pointed out with Corcoran and Ramsey, they've got a specific area that's kind of outside of the Musa area that's allowed to be a little bit more rural and kind of deviate from some of their, you know, three to an acre restrictions that we're not going to be able to get away from as we continue to, to kind of develop, so.
Does rural mean larger lots? Does it mean open farm fields? Does it mean more tree buffer?
I think it means something different to everybody.
It does.
Right? And, and, you know, I think some people tell you rural's a feeling and the character, I think's a good word for it. We will not preserve being rural because it will eventually build out. It, it will. When the council's going to push that, Hennepin County's going to push it, it's going to happen. And, and how to have a rural character adjacent to a road called Dayton Parkway, it's not, it, it, it is going to be a heavily-traveled, high-volume roadway which is going to spur high-density development, high, high-density or high, more intense uses.
More commercial.
Yeah, more intense uses that it's not rural. But.
Yeah, so rural nature translates into like green space or something like that.
More tree requirements.
Well, then it'd end up involving the city having to pick up additional land to be able to try to create those buffers, which would be something we know.
Or they might tell you it's more trails, well, that's more, more cost for city to build, maintain, and, and it's all, that, that's all good things, but it's, it comes with.
But that's fine though, if that's the priority.
Right.
Right?
Right.
So then the council has to plan appropriately for that.
That can still be rural character, having trails, having larger boulevards with more trees and can have rural character to it, but it won't be rural. And I don't think we'll ever make everybody happy with that because it, it, the area will develop.
And, you know, I, so I, that's a good point, John. I think that a not, so the challenge with rural character is it was a political hot button, not this election cycle, but before the 2040 comp plan. And it was because Dayton wasn't in financial trouble because they put infrastructure in in the Great Recession. It's just how it worked, but, and a lot of people fought hard that, well, we just want to stay rural and that's where that came from. But defining what rural character is, so especially if that's one of our tasks to figure out how to make stuff look rural, we need a few little bit more directional points. I mean, it could even be architectural. You know, there could be architectural design requirements that go in. The Old Village, when they approved the RFP, I mean, that's not so much it's a bad thing, but, you know, the Old Village, like all these new subdivisions have architectural committees and different design guidelines, so their, the neighborhoods kind of look away, whether that's right or wrong, I don't know. But if you want to influence the Old Village, same thing is the city has some very specific architectural requirements. And so in the long run, it looks like everything belongs versus, you know, this guy built the cheapest investment house possible, and then this guy built a nice single-family home and this guy built something else. It's like, it's just not going to, as things do redevelop in that area, it's not going to have synergy to make the next thing redevelop unless you do something about it. And so, you know, architectural standards can even come in in certain things. But we just need some direction of what, what, what are some of our goals when you say preserve the rural? Like what are some, what do we do?
Or just the definition of what rural character is that they want us to.
And we can come up with some of that too, right? It could be, like I said, trails, trees, boulevards, lighting, for example, right? There was a lot, you know, some pushback on how much lighting went on Pine View, right? Could we try to establish, okay, you know, we're going to meet some minimum standards for lighting, but we're not going to overlight it because that might go against what rural character might mean to us. We need some lighting for safety. You know, it, I think some of those things can come into play to help provide some guidance on when this stuff does come in, both at, you know, a development perspective, but also any transportation-type projects, see if council agrees, you know? This could help preserve rural character.
Yep. And even with certain neighborhoods or commercial districts, you can take the open-space requirements and make sure that they're heavily used along the cor- travel corridors. So once you're in the neighborhood, yeah, there's no rural character, but when you're going down the road, you might not even realize the neighborhood's behind it because you put enough open space in.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I'd like to challenge the city on like, how do we preserve that knowing that it's not going to be rural when the city's built out? If that's really what we want to do and is that a distinguishing factor where you're like, I know I'm in Dayton because of these three characteristics that we've developed and we've maintained and we've pushed, even if it does cost a little bit extra for the developers or for the city, like is that the priority? Because, you know, like I, I agree, like if you get a bigger buffer zone and you line it with trees and you don't see the, you know, the fence that you see along South Diamond Lake Road here, you know, that is anti-rural, right?
Right. And, you know, let's face it, new development's going to probably look anti-rural the first five to 10 years, but eventually, you know, it's going to have a different character when those trees mature.
That's a really good example. My neighborhood in particular, Sundance Woods, when we started to build in there, it was kind of the rural road through there and you were really driving through the woods. And of course, that all changed to build out around it and people were disappointed. But since that time, you know, staff's done a good job and council and planning commission of making sure that the landscaping along that corridor is eventually going to represent something like what that was. And, and we're slowly starting to see that happen in the neighborhood. And we're slowly starting to see that happen in the neighborhood. Well, the trail that goes through the woods is fantastic, that's rural character to a T. If you guys have not seen it, I think it's awesome. But the landscaping, the trees that have recently gone in along there, yeah, give them five years. But after that, you're gonna see less of the back of the houses, less of the decks, less of the fences, and more of, this does kinda feel like a rural corridor, carries a lot of vehicles, but it is going to feel different. And I would applaud that, I think we've done a good job of that, particularly in that neighborhood.
Yeah, the trees along Fernbrook there, I think, ten years from now.
Yeah, well, and more trees just went in along the main road there that serves the neighborhood. It's gonna look great in five years, and those are all things that maybe planning commission, city council and staff won't get the credit for right away, and actually probably took negative publicity on it, that you took away this great rural, you know, feel and put this in. Eventually, I think it'll come back, if we do a good job up here in council and staff of making sure those items are incorporated in what we do. You know, ultimately, we're here to see that long vision, you know, I think people might object initially, but I think over time, though, it'll come to fruition, I think.
I don't know how realistic this is, John, but one thing I always thought about rural character that would be cool is if we expanded horse trail corridors. Like, there's gonna be, there's a certain, there's a few stables that if they could figure out how to operate, they may operate here forever. But slowly, if we don't do something to protect those trails, they won't be able to operate here, but, I mean, how cool would it be to be able to go, go for a horseback ride through a community settlement?
Sure, yep.
Maybe it'd be a unique identifying characteristic of our community.
And I think through our Spark District offers us a huge opportunity.
Yeah, there's already horse trails there.
They're there.
And we just gotta figure out how to connect the stables that, and we gotta be careful, because you connect the stable and then three years later, they sell and it becomes a housing development, that wasn't too smart.
I think too, you know, like on the priority list is, you know, the, you know, nice Andrews Park kinda entertainment, ball fields, soccer field kinda thing too. It's like, is that an opportunity where, when you plan that thing, you plan it with, you know, big tree buffer all the way around it, so when you're on those fields, you don't just see houses and main road and stuff, like you feel like you are fully isolated within this park. You know, you don't get that at Andrews, you feel like you're in the middle of Champplin. Right, so like, is there a way to plan our parks such that you create more buffer and more isolation, so you, when you're in that park, you are in nature and not feeling like you're in the middle of the city? You know, it takes more land.
I think we'll have a better opportunity than Andrews, because Andrews was pretty, back in the day, a square lot block. Hopefully, we can do that, yeah, cause I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do think that's an opportunity in our parts, to be able to preserve rural character that, you know, will serve all of the community. You know, they may live in a neighborhood that's a full subdivision that doesn't feel rural, but they have this space that they can go to that is, or feels that way.
Yeah.
I think that's something that, those are things that we can do within the constraints that will be provided by being in the MUSA and, you know, under, understanding that ultimately we are going to develop.
Does, does staff have any feedback on the zoning code related to businesses? Like, is there something that we need to be doing that we haven't thought of? Cause I guess that's really never even came across our plate, or my plate that I know.
I'd have to dig in more, so, you know, one example that the, that came from the EDA was removing the height limitation with an industrial district, so.
Just removing it?
Removing it, so I wanna say it's fifty feet, if I remember that correctly, so.
Cube's been big enough, huh?
You know, so.
I say you.
No, is it really fifty or is it thirty-five?
I think it's forty-five. It's forty-five.
You know, so we had a variance last year, year before for Elroy, and that was very, I think.
That was before we amended our code, yeah.
Yeah, and that was very specific, you know, Elroy was a very unique business, they had an interior crane, they, I think it was like three foot variance they needed, so fairly minor, but.
Yeah.
I don't know if we would have an industrial user that's, that needs more, more than forty-five feet, it's not impossible.
But it brings about additional challenges too, because then we go to like the public works side right now, and we look at what the fire department currently has, and if they'd be able to support something that starts to extend beyond that height. So I mean, it'd be interesting to get their input on what their, what the impact would be to their services and whether or not that's something that we would have to, you know, have council consider taking on additional costs and, you know, additional budgeting to deal with a decision like that, because it does have impacts outside of just the use itself.
We're gonna need a ladder truck.
And I believe our code says that we will allow over forty-five via CUP. Which is appropriate, meaning if you're gonna go over, we need to figure out how to manage the repercussions of what that means to us.
Which I mean is a good control for at least right now.
Yep.
Whether we decide to change the ordinance or not.
And CUPs, you don't have to approve, you can, there's, we have a lot of more flexibility than say something that comes in that meets all code.
They've got no flexibility there.
Right.
Oh, yeah, so it does, it would, it would provide a measure for us to be able to consider, rather than just kind of blanket allowing.
Yeah, I was just curious on that comment, if we're missing something, because that, obviously, we haven't seen commercial development yet, cause we don't have roads.
Right.
And again, that was just one consideration, though, did they, did you have any other particular items?
You know, so zoning has two sides to it, you know, it protects some people and it, it's an inhibitor to others, and it's equal both ways. You know, in speaking with some business owners, you know, they've been, some are frustrated that we don't have more outside storage, so outdoor storage is limited to twenty percent of the lot. We have some users that are, users or whether they're existing or would like to come here, that would like considerably more. You know, it might be eighty percent outdoor storage.
I'd say go further away, I just spent the last three days down by the refinery in Inver Grove Heights, go further away.
I think, and with outdoor storage, it's complicated a little bit, in that you don't know what will be stored outdoors necessarily, if we're gonna allow it by code, you know, are you gonna get a bunch of pallets roofing materials and AC units? Or, you know, I'm sure you've experienced it, a lot of this outdoor storage comes into play with like the RV sales too. Sometimes they're, you know, all of their vehicles parked on the lot, maybe outdoor storage or something like that. It's just so hard with that, cause you don't know what necessarily is gonna be outdoor. And you'd have to put it in a very specific spot that you're not necessarily all that concerned about.
And you can't forget we're in Hanipah County, besides maybe Corcoran, no one has, allows outdoor storage like we do anymore in Hanipah County.
Yeah, we're talking about being built out with vast majority of housing developments.
And I'd rather keep attracting the industrial users that came in here today, like the Opuses. And you know what, when you have a, like those two small industrial buildings that came in, I love those kinda small owner-user properties that want the twenty percent outdoor storage, it's perfect. I mean, that's, to me, that's why I kinda, I want those users, I don't wanna say no outdoor storage, but I don't wanna go above it.
Question for, for you guys, do you think we're overdoing some of that industrial warehouse? At what point do we wanna see more commercial?
You know, there's a little bit of a misconception, because the cubes went first, that's a true distribution center. The one we did tonight, that could be manufacturing, that could be, we don't know what, same with Capital Partners, same with Skanel. I actually think we should consider more industrial, because first of all, commercial's not gonna come here yet, we don't have enough traffic in rooftops.
I don't, I don't know.
So we have to manage that process, and so that's where, I'm not, I would stay open to expanding indu- cause we're out of industrial for the most part, I believe.
We're close.
We're really close. Well, everything's, everything's almost entitled, everything's almost entitled, they're not all developed yet, MTL's hasn't broke ground, Skanel hasn't.
So to your point then, with, with planning for commercial potentially in the future, if we can figure out right now, commercial's not gonna come here because of lack of rooftops, lack of traffic. So at, at what point in time, when we start to look forward in our plan, as we start going through land use and we look at staging area, do we determine, at what point do we hit that threshold where we're gonna be more attractive to that type of commercial? And we start to maybe move it towards those staging areas where it makes more sense, when we've got enough, you know, enough sitting here to really want to bring that in.
And we gotta make sure we reserve the commercial areas that make a lot of sense, right, right on Dayton Parkway? With the access to ninety-four, that's, that's where.
The most that commercial's probably gonna move north, because it's all gonna be serving our neighborhood, because Maple Grove already serves the region, we can't, we can't compete with that.
Prioritizing smaller commercial that serves community-based things, like, you know, convenience stores up on Balsam and things like that. That's a benefit that I think could be.
Through our comp plan right now, we do have a couple spots that are tagged for like neighborhood commercial, where it's those kinda smaller, just out of main intersection.
Yeah, I mean, we zero that right now, right?
Zanzibar.
So, John, when's the last time we had outdated traffic studies? Like in particular, John River Road.
Specific traffic studies, I don't even know if you have on, on most of it. I mean, there was a large analysis done with the last comp plan to look at regional TAZs and traffic moving, but if you're looking more specific, then there hasn't been many.
So if our city wants to push that, so I spoke to John Roush, he was the landowner that sold the last two industrial buildings that came up here, and he's also the guy that sold the QuickTrip that went in and tried to sell the other QuickTrip. It's like, John, what does it take to get a QuickTrip or Casey's or something? And he's like, well, you need twelve thousand vehicles, and it's like, oh God, I don't know if we're there yet, but if we haven't, might be a good year, well, this summer would have been a good year with all the highway construction.
Well, I can drive my car back and forth a few extra times.
Yeah, my point being is the city needs to make, cause like when you go look at MinDOT's counts, they're old, and it shows like, it's pretty low. So, my point being is if you wanna drive that stuff, you gotta make sure that those statistics are as accurate as possible, in particular if you really think you're at the threshold, because they'll come then.
I'm not, just to play devil's advocate, I'm not sure that that matters a ton, because there's a thing called streetlight data, that they're using our phones to figure out, and that, that's all purchased by, you know, these commercial companies. They know how many people are going through, whether we put tubes down or not, they've got a pretty good idea of how much traffic is going through there, and streetlight sells their data to all of those commercial entities. And even, MinDOT, MinDOT has used streetlight data in traffic studies, I mean, it's pretty decent data. It's got some, some, you know, inconsistencies at lower volumes, but specifically higher volumes, it's pretty darn good at finding.
That would be good information, again, if the city wants to push that type of stuff, getting that stuff published and out there and actively seeking, like, to me, I'd never, like, the EDA, all the time they spent on the old village, I can't, I would have rather them spend that time on, cause there's a vacant lot right there in Balsam, right across from the current gas station. Is spend some of your time to understand, why isn't that getting developed with commercial? And once we understand that, maybe we can understand what's next, maybe they'll just say it's a horrible site. Maybe it's like, oh, we never even knew it was available.
Right, a lot of it comes down to whoever's marketing it, you know, how bad do they wanna sell it?
And that's what I tried to pitch to the QuickTrip people with John, is like, it's not so much that, the traffic's not there yet, but look at all the houses and look at the fact that no other commercial's gonna come in this area for a long time, because Dayton, it's not gonna come till Dayton Parkway's built. They're gonna have a monopoly until Dayton Parkway gets built, then when the Parkway's built, yeah, then they'll have competition. Same thing about pushing a convenience store in the old village on the east end of town. Is, it's not the traffic there yet, but it's almost like a little monopoly for whoever is in the area.
Okay, I've got some good notes.
Do we have any last takeaways on that?
No, it's unfortunate our chair wasn't here for this conversation. I mean, I assume he could maybe voice some conversation with you offline or something like that.
I, I'm expecting a phone call tomorrow.
Okay. Sounds good.
Not to try and segue too hard, but just make sure you fill out the survey too, cause we'll be able to get some information from him on that.
Yes.
I did fill out the survey.
Yeah, I think we should make sure you note that to the chair, that one of the priorities should be full attendance.
That's what brought up the one last council meeting, was a commission and council attendance.
We're pretty good, aren't we?
Yeah, I think we're good.
That got passed, right?
No, not a percent.
There, there we go.
All right, I can't remember if I missed one this year, John.
Well, if we don't have any other discussion, I guess we'll just keep us moving along, so we'll, we'll jump into item number nine, which is notices and announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, so I'll add, we are pursuing an ordinance amendment that would require commissioners to attend a minimum of seventy-five percent of commission meetings in order to continue on for next year, so the intent is that this would take an effect in twenty-twenty-four. So again, this would be an ordinance amendment, it's not been formally written or approved, but they'll, I would suspect will be introduced shortly. Kevin, if you have any updates on the master plan?
Maybe the EDA or Parks Department?
Uh, the only update I have is that we're, the Dayton Master Plan preference survey on Survey Monkey is out. It was posted on October twenty-third, it runs through November thirteenth. We have had two-hundred-and-seventy responses so far, which is about five times what I would expect, given how long it's been out, so we'll see how many come in before the end of the timeframe, and then that'll be tabulated and brought forth to an open house that will be at the end of November. We're scheduling, currently talking to schedule it, it's tentatively planned for November twenty-ninth, but we're trying to schedule the activity center for that, cause we expect the turnout to be a little more than what the council chambers can handle for in-person. And then, after following that, I'm just kinda, kinda gonna run through the schedule till the end of the year, so you have an idea. Then following that open, that's an open house, so that'll be a more informal feedback, instead of the structured feedback that was on the survey.
Could you set that date again?
For the open house?
Yeah.
Uh, November twenty-ninth is the tentative scheduled date. We're gonna post that on the city website, on the Facebook page, in the app, and send out notice to all landowners within the master plan boundary area for that. That's why I say tentative, is cause none of those notices have gone out yet.
Are you gonna be presenting essentially what's in that survey, or I guess I'm a little wondering what do you present?
Much more than just what's in the survey, I mean, it'll be, that'll be part of it, is taking that along with what are our existing plans, what was discussed at Planning Commission, I have a mock map that was drafted based on your feedback on that, bringing forward some of that along with some other components that we wanna talk about. But I'm draft, still in the process of drafting all the materials for that, so it hasn't been set yet, and I have to talk with other staff as well.
Is it a reasonable request that before you, I mean, I get it, the timeframe is not reasonable, but I just feel like it's a reasonable request before you present stuff to the public, I'm just thinking what happened with Fernbrook, is that you present it first to the planning commission. Fernbrook was, you know, it wasn't, I don't, I, I just, I want it to be a success. So I don't want the public to tear it apart at the first take, and maybe we could have helped you prepare for some things, type of thing.
Yeah, so we actually have one planned for before we come to you, and then again, after we come to you, so we have both.
I'm more talking about before it goes to the public.
I'm saying we have the public before and after, so we're going to the public with the open house now in November, then we come back to you in January after we've tabulated that, along with more draft documentation, and then we have another meeting after we meet with you with the public again, so.
Yeah, I think, I think the der, the der is what the chaos.
Share, share the documents prior to that, can you?
Yeah, I mean, we can potentially bring something back, that would be. Well, we couldn't bring it back before that open house, just because your next regularly scheduled meeting. Oh, yeah, we could. So, same thing as how the survey was sent out to you, like, here's the survey, please go take it and let other people know. Same thing with the open house, we'll send all the materials and say, here's all the materials we're planning to share at the open house, and then you can certainly provide feedback and say, whatever under the sun, you know, to give us a heads up of things you may be hearing.
Before they go public from a standpoint that we've been, we've, we've been burnt a little bit. And that's why I just wanna make sure that what you thought we communicated is what you're putting down, and it's not.
Just an extra staff verification.
I just wanna get, yeah.
And if it can occur through email, then it doesn't slow things down, right? We meet once a month, we can't do it that way.
It would, it wouldn't be a discussion through email, it would just be point and point with staff, but at least it would give each of us individually an opportunity to provide some feedback, so maybe we could avoid some of those hurdles that we faced with the Fernbrook open house, and maybe get out ahead of, yeah, some of the.
Yeah, so we'll have the notices posted, so we'll have the notices posted next week for the meeting. Plan is to have things back to city staff, from myself over to John, the following week, and then he can certainly pass those materials along, and then, just cause I want John to remain your contact point, any feedback you send to John will then get passed along to me.
Sounds good. The next commission meeting is noted as the sixth, but is it actually the seventh? Sixth is Wednesday.
Let's do the seventh. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
For the December meeting, right now, we've got one item that we're anticipating, so this is a conditional, conditional use permit for a large garage. I'm gonna call it an oversized garage, I'm not. I'm going to call it an oversized garage. I'm not sure if we have a technical name for it, but.
It's a U D for a garage, it's a size.
Yep. Um, otherwise, you know, if if, uh. I mean, anticipating that'll probably be a short discussion, so if you guys would like to expand more on, uh, goals or. Strategy. I'm going to call it a strategic, I don't know if I want to call it a str- strategic plan, but strategic thinking, uh, as far as the comprehensive plan and. Or any detailed things that you'd like us to work on.
I mean, I don't, I don't want to be one to try and extend the meetings terribly longer than they need to be, but I do think that we have some opportunities with that, uh, with that light of a schedule to try and tackle some other things and see if you can. Make some, make up some ground on a few of these items, so whether it's goals or whether it's, uh, talking more about. The the existing plans or, uh, I mean, I think, I think any one of these things would be a, would be a good thing for us to.
Yeah, and maybe we make our list and then and then.
Oh, perfect.
Then prioritize what we think and then we can let Peter take it to council, especially if some of our priorities require. A lot of staff time or something like that where council wants to have, give their blessing.
Yep. Okay, that is it for notices and announcements.
All right, well, if that's the case, then I'll, uh, I'll entertain motions if anybody wants to, uh.
Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All right, we've got a motion from, uh, Paul, second from Darren, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes four zero and we are adjourned for the evening. Thank you.